All right, let us begin the planning board. Welcome to the planning board meeting on day April fourteenth. Since we have a couple of board members on Zoom, Wayne, would you like to read?
Yeah, first, so to chapter two of the Act of twenty twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted in Percy. And as a courtesy via remote means in accordance with object of law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public and board members. The meeting here will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Unless required by law, members of the public commission watch the meeting to do so using the Zoom login information provided. And they can go to the local scene backslash Duckspring for information about Duckspring programming. Including streaming and watching replay on Duckspring YouTube. Rebecca, I have a question. Did they extend the period in which we can do a hybrid? Okay, they went right up to the last minute again.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, first up on the agenda is administrative items. We have two sets of minutes and planning board administrators. So we're going to split the minutes into two. The first is March tenth. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
For a second, second. All right, any discussion on the March tenth minutes? Okay, we have, I was call for roll call votes. Do it by voice. So let's start with Tag and Jen.
Tag Carpenter, aye.
I'm sorry, aye.
We've done, sorry.
Kristen Raphael.
Steve Kent abstained.
Thank you. Our next will vote, we have the March twenty-fourth minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
For a second, any discussion? No? Okay, we'll call for roll call votes, starting with Tag again.
Tag Carpenter, aye.
Jen Turkot, aye. I'm sorry, aye.
Wait, no, sorry.
Kristen Raphael.
And Steve Kent, aye.
Thank you. All right, next up, Planning Board Administrative. I attempted to move this to the end. That's all right, everybody, please. We have any kind of things that we need to discuss that we don't pick up otherwise. So why don't we just jump right into N R twenty twenty-five dash zero one, the sixty-six Seabury Point Road. Hello.
Good evening, Mark Casey Sessions survey. Can't see if we can put that plan up on screen. My client is at sixty-six Seabury Point Road. It's a nineteen sixty-nine subdivision. In nineteen seventy-nine, the former owner of this lot, the former owner of this lot and the former owner of the lot that abutted that together and decided it'd be a great idea to build a boardwalk. Going down to the water. That was about nineteen seventy-nine. The Wetlands Protection Act didn't come into effect until nineteen seventy-five, so the Conservation Commission and that's where it was. Pretty new, operating under the Wetlands Protection Act. And they, there's no easements, there's no easements of record. It was just everybody thought it was a great idea, conservation allowed it. And fast forward to today, my client's house is up for sale. And she's lost two sales because people are concerned about the liability of the boardwalk. So we created a parcel A for the boardwalk. And so she can retain possession of that and actually sell the house. And anybody has any questions, I'll do my best answer.
So I, yes, on the parcel A, so who will owe that some portion?
She'll retain ownership and hopefully the other two abutters will buy it, but there's no guarantee.
So she deserves two parcels, but one will be, she have wish to be able to get to that.
The only people that will get to it are the people that are currently using it. It will be this lot in the abutter to this lot.
Doesn't that then become a landlocked parcel essentially? You have to be, you can help me with this.
Well.
You have to be able to access any parcel land.
We, if you look at the case that I think spells out real clearly is called Smalley versus Harwood. You can create parcels of land, right, for all kinds of different reasons, this being a good one. When it comes to an A and R, we have not touched the frontage. We have not decreased the upland area of the lot, so there's, right now, this is technically a non-conforming lot. Because it doesn't have forty thousand square feet of contiguous upland. In my opinion, it probably didn't have it when the subdivision was done in nineteen sixty-nine. So what we're doing is not making it more non-conforming. We're just creating this parcel A. So she can sell parcel A and consequently the existing boardwalk to the abutters and if they won't buy it, she can keep it. And not lose another buyer for her house.
Mark, can you walk me through this? Is the, is the wood dock that's, that's on the right hand corner of the, the boardwalk you're talking about?
Yes.
The, the, says existing boardwalk?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's what I built in nineteen seventy-nine.
All right, now parcel A is what?
Parcel A, if you take away this line that says proposed property line. That's what we had to start with, okay, to be able to convey the boardwalk to the abutters or if they won't buy it, to keep it. So not to discourage a buyer for her own house. That's why we created parcel A.
Okay, but parcel A has two hundred square, two hundred feet of frontage?
Doesn't need it.
It does for an A and R.
No, it does not. If you, if you look at, I, I also.
I think Smalley says that you can divide it. Um. And that, and there's nothing that, that keeps you from dividing it, but, but I don't understand how we can subdivide real property. Without two hundred feet of frontage for both lots.
Or we're, we're, we're not creating a lot, we're creating a parcel. And Emily, did you pass up the letter on Jonathan Silver's name?
The online.
If we were creating, if we were creating another lot, I would agree with you that we'd need two hundred feet of frontage.
My concern, I, I, I think under the A and R and the case law, you can create the lot, but I have the same concern that Kristen had. You now have a completely landlocked lot without any easements of records to access that. Lot, in worst case scenario, if something happens, how, how do you get there? How does the fire department get to that? If someone slips and falls on that boardwalk, there's no, there's no access of record unless we're missing something of an easement to get to that.
No, there are no easements. One of the problems with this little thing. Emily, could you put up the plan that shows the boardwalk in its entirety?
Which one is? So say she sells, I think anyone that are getting to is to say, say she sells the main property, then there's a slipper of this parcel that she owns.
See, if you slide it down just a little bit.
Has she made an arrangement? Has she talked with the neighbors about going ahead and buying that now?
She's in conversation with the neighbors, trying to sell it to them now, yes. So in any event, the, the start of the boardwalk is way up here on another piece of property. And so. On this piece of property. So again, with this originally got built, it's a prior owner of this property, the prior owner of this property and the prior owner of this property. And so they all, and again, the Wetlands Protection Act was a very, very young. An operable conservation commission was in effect in Ducksperry and gave them permission to build it. There was never any license from the Army Corps. There was no requirement at the time for a special permit from Z B A. It just got built. Why nobody thought of easements? I, I have no answer for that. I don't know why. But in any event, it's become a problem for my client. Again, she's lost a potential sale because somebody is fearful of liability. If these folks up here have a big Fourth of July party. And little Johnny and Suzie run down the boardwalk and Johnny falls off and, you know, seriously injures himself. Obviously, there's a lot of liability on the owner of this property. No.
You can do this without us.
I know we could, oh.
It's a partial difference in the lot.
What's that?
It's a partial difference in the lot.
On A and R plan, all of you are deciding is, is it or is it not a subdivision of land under subdivision control laws?
You know, under the eighty-one P, eighty-one T or eighty-one P, they in our plan statute and they have the right to come and we can't deny, we can't deny the approval. So long as it's not creating subdivision. However, I still. I, I don't think it would be bad to have town council land on this one before we sign it. When, and they may say we don't want to wait for it, we can go, record a plan tomorrow. We'll have the, one of the endorsement.
Yeah, like the same way that we're fact.
Good.
So that probably begs the question, and maybe someone like you would think, well, why don't we even bother coming here? You know, with plans like this, and I'll tell you frankly, one of the reasons, because that's the way it's been done for so long. We keep coming to you with A and R plans and maybe a selfish reason, it's another billable hour that I get.
Well, but the other thing is, it's nice to, I mean, it's nice to have the stamp of planning board approval to try to settle it. Sell the separate, sell this as a separate parcel, I get it. But I think we can deal with this quickly if town council says this is okay.
Want to make a motion that says.
Yeah, I would like to continue this hearing until we have an opinion from town council. Have a review of Jennifer Silver's letter and plan. That's my motion.
Second, any discussion? The twenty-one deadline is in two days, so I think I can set that deadline. For A and R plans, we have to make a decision in twenty-one days. Sure, should, should the first motion be to extend the deadline?
Well, I have to grant you an extension.
We have to ask for that.
Oh, we have to ask about it.
And, and I, I will go ahead and do that. Can we be on the agenda for the next hearing, but that give you enough time to?
Amy or Jeff Blake or, yeah, I think Amy's going to go with us quite good.
Yeah, that's April twenty eighth.
Yeah.
All right, so those, any other discussion from the board, Jen or Tag? Okay, all right, all those in favor of? What are we doing? Is it a phone?
Yeah, we just go. We don't, all we gotta do is continue to.
Continue, we're going to continue this to the next meeting. All, all those in favor, let's start with Jen.
Jen Turkot, aye.
Jay Carpenter, aye.
I'm sorry, aye.
Wait, no, sorry.
Kristen Raphael.
Steve Kent, aye. Matt Ray, aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Twenty-eight, yeah, thank you very much.
Is that what confused her? She said I have a little sale. I feel like we've done that before. We both said I have a little sale on, yeah, this is.
I mostly keep coming because they want to build a lot.
Yeah.
But, okay.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is the ADU by law. So we have a draft in our.
Final draft.
Final draft, final draft in our packet.
Final draft.
Um. Any comments, thoughts?
It's hard to have comments on a final, right?
Yeah, I know.
Just wanted to have one last final pass before we submitted to the town clerk's office for review with part of public hearing.
But it's been through town council, that's right.
Since she's been here last and she made the changes that we talked about together as a group, so I just wanted to make sure. Just make sure.
Yeah. Any thoughts, questions? So do we need to approve this or just you just pass it on to the board?
I would vote, we'll vote right now.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Well, my concern with this is house number. I know that we have conventions in Ducksperry and there's conventions in the state and there's nothing mentioned here about how these ADUs are going to be identified. If we have such, for example, an emergency service call and they have to provide an address, how are we going to identify and differentiate the ADU from the primary dwelling as the target of the service call, the record of the service call?
Anybody know how they're identified now?
They, they don't.
They just go to that address.
Yeah.
That is a good point, though.
So we're not anticipating any separate addressing scheme for the ADUs? They will not be able to receive mail with the address?
Unless they were to do like five hundred Washington Street A and five hundred West Street B. But.
And they would vote, then they would go to post.
Yeah.
Can you do that?
It wouldn't be us. Sure, it's a good question, Tag, but I don't think we're creating another parcel lot. I, I don't know, I don't know the answer as to whether, what they would do from an address perspective.
Yeah, yes, typically says we're not subdividing, so.
I would imagine that it's handled the same way that, you know, a condominium, like a, let's say, six unit condominium building, right? You've got one address. But then it's like units A through up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something we could handle in a procedure or, you know, without having to go through the bylaw process to identify that, unit A, unit B, however we want to lay that out. I just want to see, don't want to see chaos with this.
Maybe that's something that the owners work out with the post office too, to create that unit as Jen mentioned. But does this sound like we need to work out?
The post office, I can put up two metal boxes.
No. Other, other places.
Two of them in two metal.
Yeah, I'm not really concerned about the mail, it's just an issue. I'm more concerned about public safety specifically.
Yeah. I would hope that if somebody had a public safety service call and they were in ADU, they would say that. But who knows, because those are emergency situations. I don't think it's something we can address here.
Okay, so I'll bring it up, thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions? We have a motion to approve the.
Right, ADU by law.
Okay, yes.
So move.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor of voting to amend the zoning by law, zoning, the ADU zoning by law? We'll take a vote now, starting with Jen.
Jen Turkot, aye.
Jay Carpenter, aye.
I'm sorry, aye.
We've done so.
Kristen Raphael.
Steve Kent, aye. Matthew Ray, aye.
You. Okay, next up is the MBTA community's outreach. So perhaps Tag and Steve could give us an update on what's happening with MBTA communities working with.
Well, since I've been doing this all along, I'll be happy to kick it off, but I really want to hand this over to Steve. So happy to have you here, Steve. The chair of the working group is now present and I think it's entirely appropriate that he lead the charge with the planning board. So take it away.
You have to do so, thank you, Ted. Yep, so as Ted mentioned, I'm chair of the MBTA community's work group. We, I, I was talking with Kristen just before the meeting, we are continuing to work at a fever pace to get our, to get our charge completed. With regard to outreach, we currently have three, three outreach sessions scheduled. They are for, the first is for April twenty-ninth from six to eight P M. That's a public forum. All of these, by the way, will be in the merry room at the library. So April twenty-ninth from six to eight P M. There will be a second one almost a month later on May twenty, excuse me, May twenty-eighth from six to eight P M. And then there'll be a third one during the day on June fourth from one to three P M. So these are three outreach sessions. Where we will be presenting, we're working on a final presentation right now. That will be presenting at each of the, at each of the outreach sessions. And that will be available, I expect by the end of this week. We'll finalize that on Thursday of this week at our regular meeting.
I'm sorry, could you get this yet again?
Sure, yep. So the, so the first is April twenty-ninth. That's from six to eight P M. That's the first one. The second one is May twenty-eighth. That is also from six to eight P M. And then the third is on June fourth, that's during the day, from one to three P M.
Where are they held?
These will all be in the merry room at the Ducksperry Free Library.
Thank you.
Sure. So that's the schedule for our, you know, for the formal public outreach. This is not, this is not including the May twelfth Planning Board Public Hearing. Of course, that's something we're obligated to do, or that the planning board is obligated to do by law. So these three outreach sessions are in addition to the public board, the Planning Board Public Hearing. In addition to this, we are currently compiling a list of the town departments. That we will also be looking to get on their various agendas in the meetings coming up in the next couple of months. To meet with them as their, as part of their organizations, to do a similar presentation with them, answer questions. And, you know, address any questions that may come up from the public, who may be attending those particular sessions. So we're working on that list right now. This coming Thursday, we'll be reviewing that list of the different town departments. And then we'll be assigning individuals from the working group as representatives to go to each of these, each of these sessions.
Some of those, some of those committees and departments, so I don't know what you're describing, already have planning board liaisons. In fact, many of them. Why is the planning board liaison sufficient to do that outreach?
That, very good question, Wayne. You know, we'd be, we'd be happy to engage you in the process if, if you'd like to, if you'd like to be engaged in that. And we could certainly discuss.
Well, I mean, I'm certainly happy to talk about it, the Hall's Corner Working Group. I mean, but it seems to me that you folks are burning the candle at both ends already and if we have playing board members who are already existing members of these groups. Let's use the people we got.
That, that's a very good point, Wayne, and I, I think, and there's, there's merit to what you're suggesting. As, as we've been debating this, as we've been putting together the presentation that we're working on, what we're realizing is that there's, there's a lot of it's very difficult to communicate nuance on this particular issue, particularly in the public setting. And so we, we understand that and we recognize that. The presentation that we're working on, really, we're trying our best to capture the facts as best we can and, and express them in a clear manner and as clear and as simple and as consistent a manner as we possibly can. And so that's why, so we were thinking that that would probably make it most appropriate for members of the working group to present here, given that we want to maintain that, that true consistency of that message. That's not to say that members of the planning board can't do that and show that that's possible, but just to maximize the consistency of the message across all these, all these presentations. We think that that was the best way to accomplish that.
So among the materials I looked at before this hearing, there was a there was, looked like a handout that was printed in green that really sort of ticked through the main points. Is that something that you folks put together? Who put that together?
That was our, that was our first, our first outreach that we did. We had a couple of sessions on, during the month of March. We had one on March twenty-fifth and then on March twenty-sixth. So that was our first, that was our first outreach that we had done. Tag and I had done a lot of the work there. We had borrowed some information also from, from N A P C. Our consultant in order to put that together. What we were realizing based on the feedback that we were getting is that it needed to be a lot simpler than what, what we were actually presenting. We're presenting a lot of technical detail. With regard to, you know, what zoning is, you know, giving a real zoning one-on-one primer to those who are attending. We were realizing that that's not what the public was really interested in talking about. They wanted to talk about, you know, the kind of the big picture, what impact is this going to have on the town? And so we completely redid that presentation. You haven't seen it yet, this will be finalized by, you know, you'd expect on Thursday. And then that will be publicly posted and then that will be our present, and we may tweak it over time, but that will be the presentation of record that we'll be going through. It's a lot clearer. I think it's more aesthetically pleasing, quite frankly. And then there'll be, you know, a good bit more explanatory detail with regard to the plan itself in that particular presentation.
So you mentioned presentation two in here. One was more related, right? Had, was, there was one at the very end in our packet. That was the one that you had done before, correct?
That was the one with the entirely green background. Yes.
The ones in the packet are the ones from Chappa and I mean, I don't have the ones from the.
Oh, then, then, Wayne, I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding. Yeah, so the.
I thought those were well done.
Yes, that, that, those were, so yeah, let me rewind and start over. So that presentation is from, from NA PC, excuse me, from, from Chappa. Incorporating data that was prepared by NA PC. And so this is a working draft that we're working from right now. For these outreach sessions coming up. There was a separate one that I was referring to that we've now set to the side in favor of this one that you see here.
So this is the one that you.
This is the one that will be, again, we're going to make some tweaks.
Some clerical.
Yeah. Yes, so what's my name again for that?
Yes, I'd like to go back to Wayne's suggestion about the liaison relationship that we have between the Planning Board and the existing, you know, the other committees. And I'd like to suggest that we take advantage of that and perhaps the. Working group could receive a list of the liaisons from the Planning Board. And the working group could come up with a list of individual members to reach out to that liaison. And then those two individuals could come up with the correct plan for that target committee. It may be a case that the Planning Board member is most appropriate. To present and talk to it, to the group because they've been sitting in that group for some time. But I think it's also vital that a working group member be present at that presentation because the meat of the conversation and the information that's exchanged. Needs to go directly to the working group through a member rather than be passed through the liaison to the Planning Board and then to the working group. We need to be much more cohesive about this, in my opinion.
So I think we got a list of committees within our packet. Is that, are you using, is the working committee using this?
That's what we're starting with in terms of figuring, who are we going to be reaching out to.
Okay, and I note that that list does not contain the identification of the Planning Board liaison, so I'm not sure who, if any, is already assigned.
It does, in fact, in several areas.
Does it? I just saw, is there a new copy? Because the one I looked at didn't have a liaison assignment.
It doesn't do it for every, every committee, but.
I have stuck. Planning Board. To. Have it. It's a Hall's Corner is on here. Yeah. So how long, I'm curious, how long does it take to go through this, this presentation?
Well, we have not road tested it yet. We would expect that it would take no longer than 15. If it took more than 20 minutes, we're not being efficient enough, so. We expect that this would be about a 15-minute exercise.
Sure. I was trying to discuss this with somebody the other day and. It is sort of benefited me over the course of my. Career in trying to persuade people to do things that I'd like. To make three simple points. The more you can reduce an argument to three simple points, the easier it is to digest and to understand. And as far as I tried to digest this, is that what you folks have designated are areas that are already. Substantially dense with a relatively low likelihood of any near-term development. Right?
Absolutely correct, yes.
And quite frankly, should it be developed in some way 15 years from now? That's still a place that already has density, right? The second point is, a lot of people are going to, are going to glom onto this notion that there's this. Lawsuit out there, bringing lawsuits brought by this town. That says that this is a non-funded mandate. Okay. If we get injunction, we get injunction. If we don't get injunction. The case goes forward. We might win, we might lose. But the, but the only thing the state would have to do to remedy that. Is basically pay us for town meeting and some lawyer fees. So the state can get around this thing, this unfunded mandate thing pretty easily. If they choose to do so. So this notion that there's a lawsuit out there has to be dispelled as some sort of panacea. That's my view. So the, the notion that this lawsuit is out there. If we were to win this argument. We can go back and change this thing and, and repeal it if we wish. If we ultimately were to prevail and the state doesn't want to fund it, we can go back and repeal it before anybody builds anything. And. Then, that's my second point. But the third point is, and it's the point that I've been trying to get clarity. Is how much are we going to lose? We just had an override vote that was very, very close. Where. Apparently, we were a million seven in the hole, but we asked for 5.8, right? When, at one of those meetings, at one of those override meetings, in fact, the one that I, that I was a moderator for. The Mary McKinnon said that we were going to lose $3 million, at least $3 million. And I'm trying to get some clarity on that number. And, and I know Rebecca, you've done an analysis of what grants we would, we're standing to lose right now.
I didn't do the analysis. I helped gather the data, but.
What's the number?
What is it up to now? We just added another one. I just don't like it.
But for discussion, it's a fairly large number. And that, and that's.
Enormous number when compared to what we just voted on. You know, we just had a horrible fight over. Over the fact we're a million seven short. And quite frankly, the problem that I have with the number. Is that there is significant. Doubt. Among. A good portion of the population in Duxbury as to whether Town Hall plays games with the numbers. And I'm trying to put that. Trying to put that gently and politely. But there is a, there is a significant level of disbelief. Of our town government when they say it's going to cost tax.
So, okay, so coming back to you, so you, you made, the, the larger point that you made is there is really three.
Those are the three years.
Yep, and we are, we are focusing on all three of them very carefully.
Well, those are what I thought of.
Yes, yes. So, you know, the, the first one is really, kind of without dispute, this is existing density that we're opposing to overlay. The opportunity for near-term, you know, new dense development is, is minimized to the greatest extent possible. Your second point was with regard to, you know, with regard to the lawsuit. And whether or not we'd be able to, you know, whether there was an injunction. It just, one of the things, and we anticipate the possibility that either this or any future legislation might in some way invalidate. And then if the law was invalidated, we would still have, you know, in the absence of anything else, we would still have a bylaw that's in effect and that could be acted upon. So recognizing that, we are in the process right now, when we're finalizing the bylaw. We'll be building in, it's an orderly, in our full term, but it's a self-destruct clause that we're building into it. Which essentially says that if, if the law is invalidated at some point in the future. Then the, then the bylaw itself is automatically invalidated. So that would be. That would be our protection, if you will, if the, if we were to have a bylaw, but the law, then the law itself, if the law itself were invalidated.
Is EOHLC going to accept that, Rebecca?
I have to check with them because Amy actually just responded today on the latest draft and wants us to check. Because she doesn't seem to think that we needed a minute, but. She wants, she wants, did you see that today?
I, I have not seen that yet, so.
She wants us to check, with the AG's office too. She actually wants us to check them both.
Okay, and we're meeting with Amy tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, so we'll be having some further discussion of this. So, but, but that's another very nuanced concern that we need to be able to address is that, you know, in the face of it, it looks like there's a contradiction. We're asking people to vote on something that, on the one hand, but on the other hand, the town is looking to, you know, get an injunction or. Be successful with the plan. So we're, we're looking to thread that needle with our communication. To your third point, though. You know, what's the number for the, what's the number for the grant exposure is, yes. And, you know, the, the answer to that is, it's impossible to know what, what the number is. And there's a number of reasons for that. The first is to recall that in the law, there were four grant programs that were specifically called out. In the legislation for which we would be ineligible.
But they can amend that at any time.
They can amend that at any time, that's right. But then there's another 14, 13, so we're up to 17 now. There's another 13. Where the criteria for whether or not we would be able to get those grants. Our, our compliance, our compliance status with respect to the law is something that can be considered by the granting authority. When they're deciding whether or not to grant that, or to grant those funds to the town of Duxbury. So. Those are criteria that they can use.
So with 17 grants, 17 or 18. Potential grants edition.
Yes, so.
I'm literally trying to get rid of the nuance.
Yeah, yeah, I was actually going to say, I think it's really important. I'm hearing you say, well, here's this. I, I think Tag and Steve, that it's really important to be really crisp, really clear, just like get the nuance, like all those things you just said, Steve. Don't mention it. Just like, here's the deal, these are the three things, this is what we need to do. And then I, you know, I, I don't know, I would, I would, I'm curious, what is, what guidance has Chappie given to you? On, on the, on the whole presentation and communication and what, what are they suggesting they do?
With regard to the grants, you know, provide, and we can provide people and we'll provide people with numbers when we're communicating. You know, but we'll be explaining, you know, this is what the grants are for, you know, these, this is what we've gotten in the past. These are grants that we've applied for. This is our exposure, you know, we, it's not necessarily that we would lose them, but we've risked losing access to these grants.
Well, Mary McKinnon said we're going to lose $3 million bucks.
Right, so I, I think maybe the list, if we come up with a list of what have we received today, what, what, we know we've applied for.
Yes, we, we have that list and we, yep, so we, we certainly can understand that. And we'll be able to, you know, we'll be able to speak to that and we'll, we'll have that included in our, in our presentation.
I'd be, like to see that ahead of time, how about you?
Yeah, it's been a number that's been.
Yeah, I've heard all sorts of things, sorry.
And. So the other, the other thing is. I can easily hear and I've already heard, we already voted on. We've already said, no, we're not doing this again. The problem with that view is that the, is that the Attorney General now has the authority to just jam it down our throats. According to SJC, right? So we can't just say we've already dealt with this. Because we're going to have to deal with this one way or the other. Either we're going to be forced to deal with it or we'll deal with it voluntarily right now in a way that makes sense.
That, we are communicating that message as well.
Okay.
Yes. And, and, you know, the, the message is, the other part of this message is, the plan that we have, the plan that you have in front of you. This is as good as it's going to get. There's, there's really nothing better, better in the sense that minimizing the possibility of future development. There's nothing better that we can come up with. So this is as good as it's going to get for you.
You're into this.
I've got a couple, more than a couple, residents in town going down on a plan will come up to me and ask me. And let's be clear, I mean, when we get down to practically, we're talking about the villages, right? I don't think, there was not a lot of uproar about Island Creek.
Right.
And, and so now we're adding, we're swapping out Bonches for the villages. One of the, in my understanding, is that the existing density of the villages is greater as we stand here today. Than it would be under the MBT, MBTA proposed zoning, is that correct?
Actually, we just got numbers today and we're sitting around, I, I, there's a very small difference. Practically speaking, they're the same.
I mean, I think a strong message is.
That's a great message.
Yes, exactly. I mean, you, you know, if this, somebody would have to take the villages, tear it down and build up less housing or less buildings that are there right now.
And, and, and why would you do that? And, and what you're talking about is taking a, a business that's doing pretty darn well. And we're, and they're not going to blow it up in the near term, right?
You have to get the shareholders, you have to hurt all the shareholders to vote on this, yeah.
Yeah. I. It, it's great that people understand the nuance. But my strong belief and suggestion is. Simple, 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 simple.
We, the, the presentation that you see in front of you here is simpler than the one that we had done last year. It's simpler than the one we had done back in March. You know, we are simplifying it further as well, so.
I wonder, so your, the plan is to. The, the public first public outreach to be the 29th and we haven't even on.
The day before.
28th. I wonder if it would make sense for your group to come and present to us and we can be here getting things and we can provide some feedback, we can have some conversation. And that, I think that that might be a good thing to do. Because the other thing we have to keep in mind is that Planning Board is like technically responsible for all of this.
Yes.
And so I think it would be helpful to make sure that we're, we're in the loop, we understand what the communication is, what the conversations are, and also help like use this as a. To support all the work that you're doing. Because I, we're spending four hours a day on this, it's a lot, Steve, I really respect everybody's time and. I, I know that that's, it's just a tremendous amount of time and energy and we want people to help you with that.
We are grateful for the help you've shown and for that that you'll get. So I, I'm receptive to doing that. I'm trying to emphasize.
Has Amy weighed in on the self-destruct provision as to whether.
That's a question I.
Yeah, it would be enforceable because I'm sure there's a conflict of, a conflict of provisions clause already in the zoning bylaw. But this would not be, if the law went away, you no longer have a conflict of laws. You're still, the town could still have a zoning overlay. We could vote to have a zoning overlay. Does the self-destruct provision in the bylaw, is it even, is it even legally enforceable? I'd be curious if Amy's, if she weighed in on that.
I can read what she wrote earlier.
And, and as I said, we'll be having further discussion.
No, I think the idea makes sense. I just don't know if it's legally enforceable.
Yeah, then you get into the other issue that you have where there's change in bylaws instead of what, what are your grandfather.
Right.
It's something that's built, in other words, do we create an.
It's not whether it's somebody's belt, if somebody's hold a permit.
Process, yeah.
She said, in my opinion, this provision may be problematic because general law, section, uh, checker 48, section five is the only way to amend a zoning bylaw. And the bylaw cannot be self amended. Additionally, even if the AG does not strike this, the EOHLC has an issue with it. The town may not be deemed in compliance with the law. I recommend you consider deleting this provision. If not, I highly recommend you seek guidance from the AG, EOHLC about this provision.
That's not a surprise, I guess.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
Let me change our approach on that.
You'll have to decide tomorrow if you want to try to get, I would try to get, but that's.
We can hash it out tomorrow.
The idea being that we want to be, we want to give people some comfort that in the event that this is ever invalidated, what can we do about making sure that we're not exposed to any extent that we don't have to be exposed?
We just repeal it.
Yeah, we can repeal it, but then you have that interstitial period between, you know, that where we're still exposed, but.
I don't think she missed a knocking building down in six months.
Well, that, that combines with the, the comments that, or the argument or the presentation that. It's unlikely anybody's actually going to exercise the rights.
And you can repeal it and the, and the notion that you've got a notice of the change in the bylaw already. Went to freeze on whether you can do things. There's a whole process of repeal that would, I think, minimize the opportunity for somebody to jump on this. And quite frankly, if they were to jump on it, I suspect what you would see is some improvement, some improvement. what you would see is some improvement, some improvement.
That, that, that's the most likely outcome, I think, I guess, so. Um, so, uh, Tag, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add, um, but I, I was just gonna go to kind of my, my takeaways here, unless there was further thoughts of discussion.
Yeah, we got, we kind of diverged from the communication topic into the bylaw topic, which frankly is of more interest to me, so I'll share that, where we stand at this point, and we're gonna discuss this tomorrow. Uh, as you pointed out several times, Wayne, uh, the site plan review process is the fulcrum that we have on this, the only leverage. So, right now, in the current draft of the bylaw, there are some, uh, there's some language that we've imported or brought in, related to the special permit process, which of course is the responsibility of the ZBA. Uh, I'll cite two very small examples to put it into context. There's one about parking lot lighting approval, and there's one about approval of the Affordable Marketing Plan. Those are both ZBA responsibilities right now, and we'll have to figure out how to slipstream those ZBA activities into the Planning Board Site Plan Review Process, or find a way to, you know, delegate and, and create a package for the ZBA to consult to the Planning Board to make determinations on those aspects of the plan, uh, which are traditionally done by the ZBA. Or make the Planning Board responsible for some of the things ZBA is doing now. Those are the three avenues that we can pursue, but that's gonna have to be settled to finalize the bylaw.
You know, OHLC is gonna let us regulate the affordable aspect? I thought that was part of the problem the last time.
No, it's the marketing plan, there's somebody has to reprove the marketing plan for affordable units.
Correct, yes.
And, and they're okay with that?
Uh, it, it's part of what we're, part of what we'd be required to do if we include an affordability component in the bylaw, which is what we're doing.
No, it's required.
Uh, well, I, I guess.
Can't we just put something there about for our bylaws, you know, the appropriate?
The appropriate party to approve, this would be the, the ZBA?
Or just, I would just think, we would follow our.
Never mind. So I don't think it makes sense to send it back to the ZBA, quite frankly, because you're talking about site plan review that ultimately gets, you can condition site plan review, you can't deny a project over something. You can condition a project. The, but if those conditions are such that they're, that they basically, no longer make this an asset right by the usage, then you, then you still have problems. I think, it, it seems to me, site plan review is something that the zoning, that the Planning Board does, and to the extent that this is a portion of the site plan review process, it should be for the planning. That's my sense.
Oh, sorry, Steve, that's kind of the way we have right now, we just patched it quickly and said, you know, Planning Board is responsible. Uh, but the problem with that is that we do not have procedures for that. Our bylaws typically include a section on procedures, so the town meeting is clear about how we expect town government to, to proceed, uh, and we don't have that for this, so, at a minimum, that would have to be written and inserted into four forty.
I, I hesitate to make the perfect the enemy.
You seem to avoid that.
Just trying to cover the bases.
This is a great strategy. Uh, I just have one question about the map on the, right after the, the overall town picture, you've got the MCOD areas on, one on Tremont, and one at Kingstown, like, side by side. What is the number in the center, the, the number in yellow, in the center of each of the parcels?
That is the, that is the acreage that's represented by that particular area.
Acres, okay. Great, thanks.
So, part of what?
Doesn't, I'm, I'm sorry, Wayne, I, I don't mean to cut you off, I, um, if you look at the MCOD compliance check, gross land area, it doesn't match. Our model says it's fifty point one three two, but if you add thirty two point four and twenty point six three, that's fifty two and change, just heads up there.
Thank you. Yep. Yep, thank you, Jen, we'll, we'll make sure to be, let me check that.
So I don't remember specifically, I'm sure that you folks do, part, the, the issue that EOHLC had with our measurements the last time, in terms of whether, whether we had sufficient area because we were excluding some areas from the building, from the building area. Do they have an issue with the mayor, which we had determined the areas?
Uh, yes, uh, the, the concern there, and Ted, you remember this better than I do, uh, but it had to do with, uh, you know, how the rights of way were incorporated into modeling. Um, so, that, that was, uh, we understood what the issue was, that was an error that our, our previous consultant had, had incorporated into the model. Then they're, the consultant that we're using right now is, was aware of the issue, and they, they modeled it such that that's no longer an issue. Uh, excellent, so, uh, the takeaways that I have here, uh, and, and, you know, guide me as you need to, um, uh, you know, we'll, we'll compile a list of those, uh, those groups that were, the, the departments that we're reaching out to. Um, you know, we'll make sure that we understand who the liaison is in each of these cases. Um, we'll look to, look to coordinate our outreach to them with the liaison, and with a member of the, uh, the working group as well, um, and present that, uh, those groups, when and if that's appropriate to do. Uh, Wayne, your, your three-point approach, I think, is, uh, is well taken, we'll, we'll be addressing those, uh, those three points, uh, we'll be absolutely emphasizing those. And, uh, and then on April twenty eighth, uh, the next Planning Board meeting, um, I think, I think it's appropriate for us to, if people do try and run the presentation, get feedback for you, you know, we'll have some time to tweak it, uh, prior to the first meeting. Uh, Tag, I don't know if you had any other, any other thoughts on takeaways or approach?
No, I think you've nailed it, that sounds good.
So on the community, is how many of your committees now is?
We have seven.
Seven. And so, if I, that you have more, uh, boards you need to go to, or committees you want to go to, please reach out to us, we'd be happy to do that for you. I understand that you want to have, you want, one of you wants to be there and do the presentation and the talk, but I think it's still, I think we're all, you can bring us up to speed on more details, but I think that we can speak generally, we can hit all the highlights, that you, you're finding you're just spread thin, and you can't get to everybody.
Well, some of these will be after you've given the, the presentation.
Right.
And we'll have a good sense from what you just said to us, what we're supposed to say.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Exactly, so we have to do that.
While, while we're still on the subject, I do want to mention, Steve, that in the briefing we gave to the Select Board a week or two ago, there was a slide where we made a specific ask for the twenty first and the twenty eighth, for this to be on the agenda. I think we've just touched and covered the twenty eighth, uh, would be really a question for the Select Board for next week. What we might present there, or what we want to put before them. It's not a Planning Board question, although, you know, we are trying to coordinate amongst all three boards, of course, so, uh, worth, worth paying a little bit of attention to the Select Board as well.
Uh, and the other thing too, I think Rebecca, we can talk a little bit about having a Facebook account.
Oh, thank you, my goodness, yes, um, so that, that is, uh, that's the other aspect of our, of our open share. Um, it was a subject of intense debate, but we came to the, the conclusion that, um, it's appropriate for us to put the presentation, the final presentation that we're working on, that will be part of a, um, a Facebook post that's put out by the Planning Board, um, onto, onto Facebook. Um, and so it will be out there. Um, a key aspect of this is that comments on the Facebook post will be turned off, there will be no opportunity for people to place comments, the facts will be put out there, um, and, and we will not be responding to, uh, anybody who may be placing comments out there in other forums. Um, the information will be out there for people to digest, um, we will, and then the objective, of course, is for us to make sure that other groups that we're presenting to, other, other boards and departments within the town, um, that they link to it, uh, and then, you know, disseminate it out to those who, uh, uh, their groups as well, so that people can see it.
What's the plan to deal with Duxbury and helping Duxbury?
They, th- this is the plan, they deal with Duxbury, helping Duxbury.
I, I, I don't like it as a plan to, I think you have to directly engage. Because all you're gonna get is people who are either, who are against this in a way that if all of that builds up into some crescendo without somebody routinely responding to it, I, you're gonna get a, a wave of dissent that, that I, I, I really strongly believe that, that we gotta respond to this stuff, that.
What do you think would be an effective way?
Well, I.
I have my thoughts, but.
I think that every, every so often, when, when somebody posts something that's just dead wrong, we, we gotta say, hey, really appreciate the, really appreciate the opinion here, but I think you have it wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know it, no, I know it. Yes, because I sit on the board for the beach, all right, I get it, 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 it engages you in a real morass. But part of the fact that the override didn't pass was because Duxbury Helping Duxbury was a wave of negativity around the issue.
I agree.
And, and I, I think we can, we can post our thing and not let anybody put any comments on it. But my view on it is, if we think this is important, we gotta take it off, we gotta fight.
Yeah, I agree, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, Kristen, but I want to point out that we did have a couple of working group members who engaged, and, uh, they were so traumatized by that, that they refused to do so again.
I get it. And, and Ted, it's important to note that they were engaging as individuals, not as representatives of the working group.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, that but I do think that this is a more palatable plan. And, and that the engagement can be a little more straightforward. I mean, the fundamental issue on the last time, and it was a reason that I voted against it here, was there was a large parcel of property that was in all likelihood about to get developed. That's not what we're talking about.
That's right, we got away with that.
Is the proposed Facebook page the Planning Board or the MBTA communities?
Planning Department.
So Rebecca, you should take on the Facebook.
Oh, we're not taking a lot.
I nominate the interim plan.
An interim plan, right? All of her time.
Like a full-time job.
Yeah, full-time job. I do agree, I do think that there's, uh, it's, and it's what I saw at the, uh, at our first meeting, I felt like a lot of people got their information there, and I would say the majority of it was incorrect, and I think that was really unfortunate. So I think by, um, yeah, part of me wonders, like, should it be like the two of us that just say, hey, thanks so much for engaging, there's so much information here at the planning department site? Just kind of like, point people there, don't engage, just send them there, just like, no, here's.
That might be the right way, it's just simply to say, hey, this, this question is directly, uh, addressed in the planning departments, uh, and then just get going.
Yep.
That, that, there was a link at the end of the presentation where you can go for exactly that, exactly those reasons.
But I think you just responded Duxbury Helping Duxbury, or there's already a, a Duxbury, uh, Facebook group against this.
There is, I, I think there's a few, yeah.
Um, but, but rather than responding on point by point and saying, hey, there's a complete presentation on this.
Yeah.
Um, please look at this link.
That, that sounds like a reasonable proposal, I think we'll, we'll certainly consider that.
Well, I don't think you should, guys, your team should.
Well, now, I, I, this is something that we, we will communicate to the group, uh, I, I think that they, you know, since we're producing the information that's gonna be responded to, we, I, I think they deserve to know what we're talking about here, and, and that, you know, how that, that there is a, they thought that we would respond in this way. Uh, so we'll, we'll certainly bring that up, but, um.
Yeah, I think that's the way we hope to respond.
Well, no, that's what I'm, so, I don't understand, I guess I missed what you're.
No, I, I'm just saying, this is, Wayne is proposing a reasonable response, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll talk to the, we'll mention this to the, to the working group. We, we had taken a different approach, and that is that we would not engage in any way.
Right.
Now we're talking about something different, so that's.
I'm still saying.
I'm talking about a planning board response, or a department response, not a working group response.
Right, and, well, we, we were, we were talking about no response from anybody, not at any time, so, and this is.
I, I just think if it goes unresponded to, there's just too much activity, and, and people, you know, people are pretty persuasive on Duxbury Helping Duxbury.
And no carries a lot of currency in situations like this, I understand that too.
And it might be also a chance for us to say, please join us in the blah, 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 these days.
Yeah.
Alright, any other thoughts, anybody else? On the communications, the outreach, I will tag.
Uh, this has been very helpful, I'm grateful for all the feedback.
Thank you for all the work you're doing, seriously, let us know if there's anything else we can do to help you out.
Amazing.
You, you already are, thank you.
Okay.
And, and just to tag, you had any final thoughts?
No, no, I think, um, you're, we're starting to get at it, I mean, in terms of the Facebook thing, there are so many specious arguments and misinformation and disinformation, and it's kind of the point, you know, they're flooding the zone with you-know-what. Uh, so, it's not gonna be something that one person can counter. Frankly, if we want to take this approach of saying, you know, let's police it, let's monitor it, let's respond appropriately, we need a team to do that. So it's worth organizing that activity, and it sounds like that organization would take place here in the Planning Board.
So if you all come up with other, if you come across any other, these are groups, can you please maybe shoot Rebecca and add us, would you like to help me collect in place, and then you, you got, Wayne and I can work with her.
Yes, okay.
Because I, we're not really stupid or, open meeting lots, I guess Rebecca and Natalie. Alright, nothing else on that? Alright, we'll go on to committee liaison reports, anybody have anything to share? What's going on in sidewalks?
No, other than, um, the good news that it's, you know, moving ahead. Um, but no, nothing, we just had a meeting on the first Tuesday in April since last week.
Nope.
Construction will start or anything like that?
Uh, they didn't have a, a firm date, so they're firm of plans, and they, they're going after their estimates. Sooner than later. Yeah, now they have the money and the plans are finalized, and now the, I think Sheila was working on putting out a bid, yeah.
On that, Matt, can I ask a question? Because it came up, I think, in maybe CPC, but, uh, that the sidewalk project has received a five hundred thousand dollar grant, which has been committed, and we believe we will retain, but there's a follow-up for another million to do more sidewalk, and that that would be at risk with MBTA, is that something you guys have touched on?
Question of, of other programs and grants that they can apply to, but I don't think that, um, any, there was no discussion of making any sort of applications that would put the five hundred thousand at risk. You know, what that came, what came up in our discussion was relatively short meeting in the beginning of the month, uh, was good news is that there's no relocation, telephone poles are needed, and uh, no eminent domain takings are needed, so it was all kind of a positive meeting, but no, that didn't come up. I'll ask that, Tag, at the next, uh, meeting, next, the beginning of May.
Do we lose the five hundred if, if we don't pass this thing?
Well, that's.
Hasn't been stated, no.
I don't think so, but I guess it could be.
Have we taken possession of the money?
Not yet.
No, that's a question.
Yeah, so I would say.
You said you're meeting with Amy tomorrow?
Yeah, yes.
That might be a question worth posing to her because I know uh when she was, when she was with the board, uh, when she was here the last time, um, the, I think it was Milton or one of the other, one of the other towns that that lost their lawsuit. About a week later, the state rescind rescinded monies that were already allocated and committed. It was like, I I don't wanna, don't quote me on this, but it was like ninety thousand dollars or something like that. That the state pulled back as a result of their, the loss of their lawsuit. So definitely a question worth posing to.
At which a grant is approved, allocated, dispersed, spent, at what stage? If you were to think of this, that is the question.
That's a big question.
Yeah, but actually, Jen, you you I finally remembered what I was gonna ask. So when we, when the team, when they're working their pressure on to the different committees, are you just trying to educate them or are you asking them for their support to stand up at the meeting, maybe even post, allow us to post on face on on the planning board faith, that Facebook page, so this group supports this.
All of the above. We we would like to do all of that, yes.
You can make that a goal. That'd be great.
Yes.
Uh, the Hall's Corner Working Group is meeting again next week. Basically, we're going to have a plan at that point from the consultants that reflects at least a few tweaks to the Hall's Corner that might help pedestrian traffic. Would the goals were, there were multiple goals trying to be addressed at the same time, including um, trying to minimize the loss of any parking spaces. Um, and we are likely to see that plan next week.
Hmm.
Um, that could be the beginning of a further planning effort. Uh, the next planning effort would have to address what do you do with the wastewater? Uh, and that I think is a pretty significant uh concern. But the the House Corner Working Group in the first instance, after literally twenty years and multiple efforts to study House Corner was very interested in actually just doing something to make it a little better. And I think we're gonna see that plan next year.
Oh, uh, Wayne, are all the commercial buildings in also going to have their own septic system or any of them shared?
Septic system, some of them are shared. Um, the the I think the most of them, there's all swath of them right along the drainage, they're shared.
Okay, yeah.
But, you know, if you're talking about putting in housing minimum of three stories. Most, everybody wants four stories.
Yeah.
To build it.
Radio site of wastewater treatment.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it there's there's very substantial constraints to 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 do much other than make it a little bit.
Or do everything sure? Um, the Open Space Committee has a goals and objectives meeting on Wednesday.
Is that the community that does all the playing fields and and uh do they do the playing field or is that more the walking trails and? Yeah.
All right, Tag, we know what you're up to. Anything else?
Yep, well, Housing Trust is still working on the R F P out at East Street. We talked about it a couple of times. And uh I think we've also already touched on the disposition of the land at Zero Kingstown Way. Uh, I'll mention it again, it's being appealed uh at at the level of the law. He's not appealing the any arguments of the facts of the case. Now they're going after the law itself, so who knows how long that will take.
Thank you. Ted, how about you?
Uh, nothing to update.
Um, Coastal Resiliency has a couple of new members, one of whom is great at writing grants. He is working on three. He submitted two, two different groups. Um, we've had a hard time getting grants in some place because we don't have things like uh and we don't have any environmental issues here, environment, sorry, environmental justice issues. So uh we've been trying, uh, the next two branches are uh for like, I think one was maybe fifty and the other one was a hundred. And it's to do work on some outreach to talk a little bit, to start to educate the town or to continue to educate the town effects of of climate change on Duxbury. So that's in a horse, which is great. Um, so anybody else have anything else for P B for uh planning board administration? We didn't touch on earlier, anything else? Anybody wants to bring up? Have a lady or Rebecca on?
Uh, I'm just gonna say the words. I'm not gonna get into it, but I previously had mentioned here and Kristen, you had suggested that we continue to pursue this idea of uh, creating a uh some kind of a uh consistent communication mechanism with the town that's not beholden to the social media trolls. Uh, so I'm continuing to work on that and I hope to speak with you in an appropriate setting and present something to the planning board sometime soon.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else, anyone? All right, we have the motion opposed.
So moved.
All right, so all those in favor?
Hi.
I guess we have to start with Jen.
Yep.
Jen, turn right eye.
There you go.
Steve can't, Matthew Ray, hi.
All right, getting as close. Thank you all.
Thank you.